I want to ask about utility bills, property, and we have a letter I'd like to have you consider supporting. And we have Leslie with two items, Tony with one, and Scott with one. Okay. Anything else for council business at this point? None appearing, then I'm going to turn it over to the city recorder to take us through electronic filing for annual statement of economic interest, SEIs.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is City Recorder Sue Ryan. So if you, all of you have had to fill these out at least once. This is your annual statement of economic interest. But there's a change this year. The state has changed it so that no more paper forms. So the basics are the same. The filing period is between March 15th through April 15th. There are penalties if you file late or don't comply. And this year, no more paper forms. So tonight's presentation is just to explain to you how that's going to work and some extra things we're doing in the city manager's office to help you through it. This affects not only the council, but the planning commission, the city manager pro temp, who's very excited about it, the municipal judge, and the historic preservation commission. So here's the process.
This does not affect the city attorney's office?
No.
Thank you.
And student commissioners are not required to file either because they don't have any voting power. So if they can't make a decision, they don't have to file. So the electronic filing system is... I'm sorry?
You were saying what, who doesn't?
The student commissioners that are in high school because they don't have a vote.
Okay.
They don't...
You're saying people, any commissioner that has, can vote on decisions that impact the city?
Correct.
How about the traffic safety commission?
No.
But they can make decisions that impact...
Not affecting land use.
Ah-ha, so it's land use, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Did you have any more questions?
No, I'm doing fine. I'll come up with more.
So, yeah, I know you will. So the process works that you will see in the literature I've given you, the handouts, the letter, the items from the state, and in the training video we're going to watch, that they will talk about a jurisdictional contact. That's me, the city recorder. And when it says assigns you a seat, I don't give you a chair. It's electronically. So everything is being converted this year from paper to electronic. So I have to go in and actually physically fill in your information this year. And then from here on out, anytime someone leaves office, starts office, is appointed to a seat, then I'm the one who sets that up. Once I assign you a seat, you'll receive an email notification. So from that date, you have 30 days to create your personal profile online. This is not the same as filling out the form. This is just going in and filling out your personal details so you have an online account. One of the nice things about the new system is, instead of having to say, "Do you have my form from last year?" Or calling the state and saying, "I think I was in office, you know, two years ago." Once you have an account, you'll be able to go in 24 hours a day. If you wake up at 2:00 a.m. and you have an interest to check your SEI account with OGEZ, then you may do so. So that is one of the things that's nice. And you can, you can go in and say, "What did I put down last year?" And you can look that up. So that'll be a really nice advantage. So once you've created your personal profile online, you will get a notification from the state mid-May, or mid-March, sorry, that you can then file your SEI form. So filing doesn't start until March 15th, and you have to have it filed by April 15th.
But that filing is electronic?
That filing is electronic. And the video we're going to watch now is one of the three train...
I have another question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Because you're talking about this profile. How far does that profile go? And how much of that is confidential information?
It's all confidential. I will not be able to see it. The only thing I can do is see your seat number and your name and your term of office. And I enter your, I confirm your address and your email. That's what I confirm.
What's, what's the security on this?
I don't know. You would have to ask the state that. It's their system. I'm statutorily required to inform you of the requirement. The rest of it is run by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission.
Uh-oh.
I forget, was this looking forward or looking back? Is this 2015?
This is if you are in office on April 15th of this year.
Okay.
If you are not in office on April 15th of this year, this will not affect you.
But it's going for 2016?
This is for the previous year.
Previous year.
But if you're not in office on April 15th, like right now, we have a vacancy on the planning commission. We'll have a new person appointed. Welcome to the planning commission. They will have to fill it out. Okay, are we ready for the video? This is really short. This is something that the... And this material is on the Oregon Government Ethics Commission website, which is the last slide, the last piece of brown paper you have. And you can watch it as many times as you want. They also, just to mention before we watch it, have people available. They're going to have extra people on because this is a big effort, affects the whole state. You can call them, you can email them, you can go in person to Salem, and they'll walk you through it if you have any problems. Okay?
Question?
Yes.
What are the hours that they're available?
I believe it's the typical hours of a state agency, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5.
And then 3 o'clock. Just weekdays?
As far as I know. You can however, send an email anytime. You know, if you wake up in the middle of the night and want to do that. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and start this.
Come to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Electronic Filing System Instructional Video. This video is the third in a series that is designed to assist users with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission's new electronic filing system through recorded navigation of the live website. This instructional video is specifically designed to guide annual verified statement of economic interest filers through their personal profile completion to the jurisdiction or jurisdictions in which they are designated. There are many benefits to this new online application. It provides a secure login, 24-hour, seven-day-a-week access, allows users to log in to update changes to filer records as they occur, and provides an efficient and effective way to meet the reporting and filing requirements found in ORS Chapter 244. During the course of this instructional video, the following topics will be discussed: how to create your user profile, and how to navigate additional account features and system requirements. It is important to note that even though the method in which you provide the information has changed, the required information and filing dates have not. To get started, you will need to locate the system-generated email from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. The email subject line should read, "SEI filer invitation to create account." The invitation will be addressed to you as a jurisdictional contact assigned you. Within this email are instructions and a system-generated invitation link. You will use this link to access the electronic filing system. If you have any additional filing requirements under ORS Chapter 244, each assignment by jurisdictional contact will generate an email invitation. You will be required to accept each invitation. This acceptance is what combines your positions to one filing requirement. You will select one of these positions to create your personal account profile. After the initial "Create a new account", you will select the link in the additional invitations. If you are routed to the "Create a new account" interface, you will log in. You will not create a new account for each position. If you cannot locate the system-generated email from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, contact your jurisdictional contact and request the invite token. The jurisdictional contact can provide this code to the filer. The filer can then manually log into the electronic filing system. Instructions on how to log in manually will be provided in the Statement of Economic Interest Filer Electronic Filing System Instructional Handbook, available on the Oregon Government Ethics Commission's website. If you are a required filer viewing this instructional video, but have not received an email or you are no longer serving in the position, please contact your jurisdictional contact. The jurisdictional contact will be able to confirm your assignment. It's important to note the system-generated link in your invitation email will be good for 30 days from the date you are assigned. You will need to complete your personal account profile prior to this expiration. Due to the upcoming filing period, you will want to complete your account profile before March 15th of this year. Once you have clicked on the system-generated link in your invitation email, it should open the default browser on your system and present the "Create a new account" profile. By selecting the system-generated link, you've been directed to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Electronic Filing System, Create a New Account Interface. As previously noted, you will be required to accept each invitation. After the initial "Create a new account", you will select the link in the additional invitations. If you are routed to the "Create a new account" interface, you will log in. Do not complete a new account for each position. Now, a few of the system's features will be reviewed before beginning the instructions on creating a personal profile. The cursor will point out the feature discussed. The system header. The system header is constant. It is the top portion of the webpage and contains a navigation bar to help users move between common areas on the site. The system header features a login，请out, welcome message for users that are registered, and navigation features. For example, to go back to the welcome page. The page header. This header is used to identify the functions of the page, and at times, it will also contain additional navigation features, body of the page. You will create and edit here. As you key in information, the page will scroll up and not be visible. You will need to scroll to view all fields. Use the scroll bar located on the right-hand side of your browser to navigate up and down. For additional navigation, the Browser Back button is located in the upper-left-hand corner of the web browser's toolbar. The Browser Back navigation will allow you to return to the previously visited webpage. You'll be creating your own personal profile account as a statement of economic interest filer. You will be creating your own personal profile account as a statement of economic interest filer. It's important to note that you will only have one personal profile. To complete this process, you will select a username and password, create two password security questions, verify the pre-populated personal profile information is correct, and you will also have the option of identifying an alternate contact person to receive reminder notices assigned to your position as a statement of economic interest filer under ORS 244050. Create your personal profile. Username and password. You will choose a username. You will choose a password. Passwords must have a minimum of one upper, one lower, one numerical digit, and one special character. Refer to the Accepted Special Character List in the text help. Using a special character not listed in the Accepted Character List will result in a failure to successfully complete the registration process. Confirm your password. Passwords must be at least eight and not more than 20 characters long. Choosing your security questions. You will now choose security questions for the purposes of password retrieval. It is important to note that the answers are case-sensitive when requesting password retrieval. Personal profile information. It is the filer's responsibility to maintain their profile information, which includes address, phone number, and email. Your date of appointment, last name, first name, email, phone number, and address have been entered by the jurisdictional contact based on information currently available. Please review to ensure that it is accurate. It's important to note that you can only edit your own personal profile information. You cannot substitute another individual to your assignment. If you need to terminate your assignment or are newly appointed, contact the jurisdictional contact within the jurisdiction you are serving. The jurisdictional contact has the administrative ability to add or delete you from the seat. You will not have the ability to terminate or add yourself to a position or a seat. Alternate contact email. This step is optional. If you elect to provide an alternate contact, you can select the checkbox to ensure this individual will receive all notices related to your position as a statement of economic interest filer under ORS Chapter 244. When keying the email address, you will need to either key the at sign or click in the space after the at sign to complete the email address. Do not use a tab key to transition from the username of the recipient to their domain name. After confirming all information, select Continue. Verifying your registration. You will now be asked to verify your personal profile. Select Continue. Confirmation. If you have successfully registered, the confirmation page will appear naming the jurisdiction you have successfully registered. You will receive a system-generated email notification that you have successfully registered. Now that you have successfully created your personal profile, you will now select Log Out. Now that you have successfully created your personal profile, now select Log Out. To log out, use the log-out feature located in the top right-hand corner of the system header. Reminder. If you hold multiple positions, you will need to accept each position by using the system-generated link in each invitation. Mark your calendars for the open filing period for the annual verified statement of economic interest report. You will receive a system-generated email advising you of when you can log into your account and begin the electronic filing process. It is important to remember the filing dates and required information for the annual verified statement of economic interest has not changed, just the method in which you provide the required information. You will now have access to your account 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to update changes to the filer records as they occur. This concludes the content of this instructional video. If you have any questions during or after your account creation, do not hesitate contacting the Oregon Government Ethics Commission.
So the video was...
Welcome to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission Electronic Filing System Instructional Video. This video is the second in a series that is designed to assist users with the Oregon...
I know. It's all the excitement the state can bring you.
It's a nice voice, though.
Yeah, it's Tammy Hedrick. She's been their trainer for a long time. So in the accordion folders I gave you tonight, you have your official letter from me. You have a short version of the state handout on... You know, it's kind of like the Guide for Public Officials Lite. But what we're going to do in the city manager's office is... Well, first of all, we'll go over some frequently asked questions. And I know most of you know this, but this is designed for very general level. I cannot fill the form out for you, and neither can other staff. It is your responsibility as a public official to file the form. What we can help you with is the technology. So what we're going to have, Don Karen and Sue. By appointment, you can ask, "Could I come in and could we go over it? Could you set up the council laptop and the notebook?" And so we'll have those set up in the council cubicle on the second floor of City Hall. It's right across from the mayor's office. And if you make an appointment, we can help you with the technology to set up your personal profile. One of the things that I wanted to say is, if you're, if you can want to do that on your own at home, that's fine. Keep in mind that OGEZ has advised us that it doesn't work on mobile devices smaller than a tablet. So you can't do it on your phone, even one of those big phones. It needs to be a tablet-sized or larger computer for it really to work well. The notebook will have, the council cubicle will have the handouts you have been given tonight and that are also going to the other people who are affected. And we will also have printed out the 93-page Guide for Public Officials. OGEZ used to print and mail that, but they quit doing it a few years ago because of the cost. And that's just like, the version you have is the light version they put together. So we have a much thicker one if you have questions about the questions they're asking you to answer. And as I said, the Ethics Commission has made it clear they're available to answer questions by phone, email, or in person at their Salem office. I had to call twice today because of technology issues, and they were readily available. I have not assigned seats yet, except for Steve's. I did one today to see how it worked. I should have seats assigned by Friday. So if you get an email between now and Friday, that means you've been assigned a seat, and you can go in and create your personal profile. And then you will get the reminder email from the Ethics Commission saying you can start filing on March 15th. You must have it filed by April 15th, or you will face penalties. So I tried to make it as simple as possible. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Some of the state end of things, I simply don't know. I'm simply the messenger telling you it's switching from paper-based forms to computer-based.
You mentioned a date of appointment.
That's the date you took office.
Well, which date?
The last date.
Okay, so the most recent?
The most recent.
All right, thank you.
I, one of the reasons I waited to assign seats was I knew that the city recorders would talk about it today, and I could see what problems everybody else ran into. So that was one of the questions that came up because several people assigned people by the date of their first appointment, and that didn't work. So, yeah.
Follow on?
That's a field that you fill out, correct?
That's a field that I fill out. But you will be asked to verify all the information I enter. When you see the blue letter and then on the first page, there's a sticker with your address on it. It'll say CC-Stephen McKinney. That's the address I have on file for you. So if that address is incorrect, please let me know. Or if for some reason I make a typo, because that does happen, and you go in and say, "Hey, Sue put down Spring Book, not Spring Brook", then you just call me, and I will change it. You don't have the power to change that. I have the power to change that.
Do you have a sample of the questions as they appear on the computer screen?
No.
So that you could just transfer that worksheet to the...
I do not. The questions have not changed from last year. Some people keep copies of their forms. I do not have them on file because it's not a city requirement.
Yeah.
This is a state requirement. But going forward in the future, like next year, when you want to go fill out your form, you will be able to pull up your account and say, "That's what I put down last year." So that's part of the reason they went to this.
Other questions? Or comments?
Well, if you have editorial comments from the state, you need to give them to the state. And that's all for me.
This is new for Counselor Essen, Counselor Rohr?
No, they had to do it last year.
Oh, that's right.
We did it at the beginning of last year.
I don't think this is new for anybody, then.
No, I have one planning commissioner's new.
And your, and your daughter, and your daughter-in-law, and your son, and your son-in-law.
You mean the household?
Yeah, it could be household. All right. Anything else, Sue?
No.
Okay. And you're, you're going to be covering next meeting, right? Don Karen?
Don Karen will be here on March 7th. She's refresher training tonight. For those who have known her for a long time, she did this for many years. So we just walked through how we do things currently.
We have a few minutes for council business. Leslie, you had a couple announcements?
I do. I even have handouts for everybody.
Well, these, I'm going to start charging for the...
Wait, do we get to approve? Don't we have to approve whether we get to take these or not?
I think so. I will consider a motion. You make it, don't you? Well, you didn't turn your mic off.
There is a free community band concert coming up Sunday, March 13th, at 2:30 p.m. Bauman Auditorium, George Fox. This is especially for children. So the music will be particularly fun for kids and anticipate lots of kids in the audience. So if you want one of these, feel free to take one. You know someone who wants it. I'll pass these around in a minute.
The date again?
The date again is Sunday, March 13th, at 2:30 p.m. Newburgh Community Band Free Concert. And the other date, I don't know if anyone has heard of the Oregon Battle of the Books, but it is a literary competition. It's really fun. That's elementary through eighth grade. And kids, there's a list of 16 books that has been set by a committee, a statewide committee. So kids all across the state have signed up through their schools to be on teams of four. They divide how their, that team is going to read all 16 books. They've been practicing and, you know, learning all the ins and outs of the books and the details. And then they get together and have battles or competitions about these books. You know, who wrote this book? Or the main character jumped off of what cliff? Or, you know, all kinds of really specific questions, and the kids get to answer it. So there is a regional battle coming up. The kids right now in our, and I think every school in our district is participating. They're working on narrowing down their top... Each school can send one team to the regional battle, Oregon Battle of the Books. The regional battle is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in being a... Let me read this so I make sure I say it right. You can be a scorekeeper, a moderator, which would be the person asking the questions, or a timekeeper. Each question, they're allowed 15 seconds to answer. So the battles go pretty quickly. So if you're interested in any of that, it is on February 27th in McMinnville. And I can send this email out to everybody if you are interested. It starts check-in at 7:30, and it should be done by noon. And that is a Saturday. So it's really a lot of fun to see kids get to learn about reading and get excited about stories and stuff. So if you're interested, they need help. And that's it.
Questions, comments for Leslie? Did you circulate the...
No.
...community band? I get to blank them? Oh, I didn't blank any of them. Very good. Scott?
I just wanted to let the council know that I've resigned my position with the Parks and Recreation District. And so I'll no longer be working for them And so I'll no, no longer be, uh, working for them or representing them.
Okay, thank you. Tony?
Well, as you guys know, uh, I've been looking for a job for the last long time, and I just accepted one, uh, but it will take me to Texas. So, uh, my last council meeting will be March 7th, uh, which will be the next council meeting, and I tackle the Marijuana Subcommittee prior to that. So we'll hopefully be done with that one the week prior to that. So there's my announcement and, uh...
So Tuesday 3/8?
Tuesday 3/8. I actually will take off on 3/9. Um, I know there's a Downtown Improvement Committee that Tuesday, but I'm not gonna make it. Mayor and City Manager Protam know about it, and I guess we're gonna start the process of application and appointing. So to complete my term, which ends in January of 18, I think, so, there you go. There's my announcement.
December of 18.
Ends December of 18, 18, yes. Any questions?
Any questions for Tony?
Um, AVP of underwriting for a health insurance plan in Austin. Should be good. It'll be a fun adventure.
What city?
Austin.
Austin?
Yeah. Yes, it'll be like Portland.
Well, that's not so bad.
Follow on, Counselor?
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Every prominent American deserves the right to call themselves a Texan every once in a while, and so, uh, you'll be, uh, you'll be a citizen of the Republic, and I'm sure that you're going to enjoy Austin a great deal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you for your service. We appreciate the time we've been able to glean from you. Appreciate it very much. And we'll be talking a little bit more about this later, I'm sure.
I'll give my going-away speech next meeting.
Oh, okay.
I'll bring tissues for myself.
Question for staff and/or for the council for that matter. Um, what's the status on the, um, rebranding, renaming, whatever you wanna call it, of our utility billing?
That work is in process now. Uh, they're looking at the redesign of the bill along with the, uh, new nomenclature for it.
And that nomenclature is?
Municipal services statement.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor McKinney?
It should be noted that it's, uh, it's in the elevator, too. We'll print it on the elevator board, all right?
You have more, take more time to read in there than I do. And, uh, another one I have for staff, and I think this one would probably be for, um, uh, our city attorney. What's the status on the, um, for lack of a better term, the condemnation of the property on Villa Road for the sidewalk?
Truman Stone, City Attorney. Um, as the council knows, that was filed and served, um, in January. The time for response is coming up. I did have some communication with Richard Brown at the Brown Tarlo Firm about, uh, some questions about process, and, uh, he indicated that he was preparing an answer. I expected to see it perhaps today, but I did not, so I, I'm thinking it'll be filed this week sometime. Uh, but that's, that's moving along, although, um, you know, there's certain time periods in every litigation where you are, uh, waiting for something to happen, and this was a time period of waiting.
Any forecast of, it's, it's time, but I, I may have missed it. Did you indicate when this may come to resolution or...
Well, the, once they file the answer, then the, um, the issues in the litigation are, are formed by the, by the complaint and the answer. At that point, there's an opportunity for, uh, what's called discovery. It's where each side in litigation has the ability to get information from the other side, um, and there'll be some period of time to do that. It could be a few months or it could be more than that. Uh, ultimately, there's an issue about, uh, whether it will go to arbitration or whether it will go to a trial in the court. Because of the amount involved, under the statute, the homeowner has the election of whether they wish to engage in binding arbitration. If it's under, I think $20,000 is the, uh, number, and we've, we pled a claim for, for eighty-one hundred dollars or somewhere in that range, so it'd be under the 20,000. If the homeowner elects arbitration, it will go to a binding arbitration, and that could happen fairly quickly. Um, I'm assuming they're gonna plead a, an answer for more than the 20,000. It, but if they plead it under the 50, then they still have, uh, the ability to elect arbitration, but it'd be non-binding, meaning that if either side was unhappy with the arbitrator's decision, then they could appeal and, and still have a trial in the court. If it's, if they plead, if we end up arguing over more than 50,000, um, which from our prior negotiations with them, we understand they believe their, um, effective disconnotation is more than that, then it would just go straight to the trial. If it's gonna be a trial in the circuit court, it's probably quite a few months out, just based on the court's schedule. I would think the fall at the earliest.
Questions for the city attorney? Now, now you have the information that you can leave town. I just handed out one, and, um, I'd like to come back a little bit later after you've had a chance to look at this. Those of you that sat the council, and I wanna say probably as early as 2008, somewhere between 2007, 2010, we had discussions regarding the Willamette Falls locks, or the Willamette locks in Oregon City. You recently had a, a discussion about the Willamette Falls heritage area and were very supportive. This has been a discussion that has been going on, was initiated earlier, uh, by the, uh, former, um, U.S. Representative Darlene Houli, um, the former, uh, city manager, city attorney, uh, city, uh, mayor for Oregon City, um... Norris, and, um, I believe also, uh, Lake Oswego may have been involved in it, West Lynn was involved in it. What it is, is we're trying to, again, bring to the attention of the legislature and in turn to the federal government, the, the value of the, of the locks. And, um, they, the group that is working on this has come to us again and asking for our support. I am personally very supportive. We drafted this letter, um, reflecting our, our position, not just the mayor's position, and I would, was hoping that later we'll, we'll bring this up week in our business session, and, um, I'll ask you for, um, a motion to approve this, but we would like to sign on along with the other communities, Canby's involved in this, Kaiser's involved in this, Oregon City, Salem, West Lynn, Wilsonville. All of these communities, including the counties of Clackamas County, Marion County, uh, and, well, uh, Yam Hill County, are impacted by, uh, either negatively if we don't have the locks, or very positively if we do have the locks. All of these entities, be they city or county, are impacted on the status of the locks. And for various reasons that, uh, are in the letter, um, I feel and my peers feel that it is very important that we work to get those locks rehabbed. So I would encourage you to, um, support this letter, and we'll talk about it later, but I wanted you to have a copy of it just quickly so that you can, you can breeze through it, and we'll, we'll bring it back up, um, later for a, for an action on that. So I, that, I think that covered the ones that I had. Do you wanna add anything to that, uh, on the Willamette locks, city manager? Anything else to come before us in work session? Nothing? Then we will adjourn the work session. You, you all are ready to file for your electronic SEI?
I'm all ready.
I learned I don't have to.
Yeah, you do.
I will not.
He won't be in office.
You know, we can, we can take care of that. We may not accept your resignation until sometime in May.
April, it's effective April 16th.
Until this replacement shows up.
We are adjourned from our work session. We'll be in recess until about 7:00.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call for order the Newburgh City Council Business Meeting for February 16, 2016. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted.
Thank you. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the city manager's report, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager Pro Tem Rhodes, just a couple of items. One, which I believe the council is already aware of, but I am pleased to announce that last Friday, we sent a letter of concurrence to Representative Davis regarding changes to the Newburgh-Dundee bypass and Wilsonville Road interchange. That appears to be satisfactory to all parties involved in that. We now have just the minor thing to do is to put together an agreement that actually encompasses that change. So, we've already gotten the draft out today. It's been circulating already, went out again today, and we're going to see if we can come to a conclusion on that in the next week or two. So, I'm pleased at the progress we've made and the collaboration we had from all the parties. The next thing that I want to mention was that the Planning Commission at their last meeting initiated a process that will culminate in the updating of our land development standards, which have long needed updating. Those are the standards that guide subdivisions and partitions in particular, and so they'll be going through a process, and ultimately those will come to council for consideration in the future. Last thing I want to mention is that the mayor and I did an update at the city club today at noon and kind of gave them information on some of the projects that we have going, things to expect coming up in the near future.
Any questions or comments for the city manager? None appearing. We now move into the area of public comments, and this is those items that somebody wants to bring to our attention that are not otherwise on the agenda for discussion this evening. And I have one individual that has signed up for public comment, and I would like to have that person come forward. Remember that we'd like to have you keep your remarks within a five-minute time limit, please. And with that, I'm going to call on Mr. Stan Hallie, please. If you'd come to the table, the mic button on the right, and identify yourself.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mr. City Manager Pro Tem and staff, my name is Stan Hallie. I'm a past co-president, currently director, and chair of the Lattahill Neighborhood Association Bypass Impact Committee. Representatives of LHNA have been to the city council many times over the years to make public comments as well as to testify on the Newburgh-Dundee bypass. This evening, we'd like to acknowledge that there's a growing optimism that the long and painful debate regarding the planned intersection between the bypass Phase 1 Eastern End, Highway 219, and Wilsonville Road as realigned may soon be behind us. And we'd like to give some credit for breaking that logjam. It goes to the Newburgh City Planning Commission, their willingness to hear our concerns, question ODOT's design options, and propose an important pause to allow the stakeholders to seek a win-win resolution. This was a broad, community-minded response to a very sticky problem. Would also like to acknowledge Representative John Davis, Vice Chair of the House Transportation and Education, I'm sorry, Economic Development Committee, Mayor Andrews, City Manager Steve Rhodes, staffer Doug Rux, among others, who've all shown leadership in getting the six entities, the two counties, Newburgh and the city of Wilsonville, ODOT, and our organization to work together. And finally, Newburgh's willingness to take the through-through design off the table, and the LHNA's willingness and others to take the know-through design off the table, remove the most contentious part of the debate. Collectively, we are now looking at what's called Option 4, the connecting of Wilsonville Road at a point about a quarter-mile or so south of Winuski on Highway 219. This is ODOT's full and preferred bypass configuration as shown in their final EIS, which was signed in June 2012. The bypass at 219 would now become a T-intersection. Wilsonville Road would stay connected to Springbrook Road as it is today until operation, I'm sorry, until Option 4 is operational, about two-and-a-half years after the bypass opens. At that time, the north-south spur running along the Springbrook Estates would become a cul-de-sac. We support this. The six entities are working to finalize the agreement, as Mr. Rhodes indicated, in the next two to three weeks, waiting for approval from both city councils, both boards of commissioners, ODOT, and our board of directors. What's left to get done is clarifying some language, putting in clear milestones and timing, adding some accountability, like a quarterly status report, to keep the effort on track. We need clear commitments from ODOT to move forward expeditiously on the Option 4 in terms of funding, planning, right-of-way acquisition, designing, and construction. Remove the through-through intersection from the bypass construction package that is now being bid upon. So, the contractor does not mobilize equipment and labor, buy material, or otherwise move ahead to build the four-way through-through. Rescind ODOT's know-through intersection design amendment, that will be before you in March, and submit a new TSP amendment, if it's required, to reflect Option 4 and other related actions. Newburgh would need to agree on rescinding the TSP's know-through and quickly review and approve any new TSP amendment, again, as needed. Other entities have similar responsibilities to be agreed to. So, I wanted to say thank you. We all look forward to making this a win-win-win for everybody. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? None appearing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Stan. And that's all I have signed up for the area of public comments. So, with that, we will move to the consent calendar. And pleasure the council, please. Counselor Lord?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as modified with our written request for council action.
The revised council action?
Yes.
It's been seconded, Bacon. Is there any further discussion? None appearing. The question's been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that, we will now move into a public hearing. And this particular public hearing is to consider an ordinance to affirm the final assessments for the College Street Local Improvement District that was created by ordinance 2013-2769 to recoup a portion of the cost for the West Side Frontage improvements on North College Street from Illinois Street to Aldercrest Drive. And I'm going to call on the council. Are there any abstentions, conflicts of interest, or objections to the jurisdiction on this? None appearing? Then I'm going to ask for a staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Karen Hoffman, City Engineer, and I'm just here tonight to answer any questions you may have. Paul Chu will actually be giving the staff report for this project.
Good evening. I'm Paul Chu, Senior Engineer and Project Manager for the College Street LID improvement project. What we have here is a proposed ordinance 2795 for your consideration to inform the final assessment for the LID. It's on page 36 in your council package. Before I go any further, excuse me, I'd like to enter into record a letter received from Willow Place Assisted Living Facilities. Willow Place has expressed their concerns in this letter after being notified of the LID public hearing. I will talk about their concerns in a moment. In July 2013, the city adopted ordinance 2769, creating the LID to recoup a portion of the cost for the West Side Frontage improvements along North College Street from Illinois to Aldercrest. The creation of the LID followed the rules and the processes outlined in City Code, Section 3.15.110. Final assessments are determined as construction is complete for the frontage improvement. The proposed final assessment for all 73 LID property owners are listed in Table 1 on page 41 of your council package. The proposed assessments total $194,197. The LID will recoup 84.1% of the cost, as staff recommends. No changes to the amount as noted in the engineer's report, which was in ordinance number 2769. number 2769. Last month, staff invited all the LID property owners to a neighborhood meeting to allow them to provide comments on the proposed final assessments prior to this public hearing. Half a dozen LID owners attended the meeting. They asked questions, but did not have any concerns for the final assessments. Figure 2 on page 38 of your council package listed the questions received at the neighborhood meeting, with answers from staff noted in the same figure as well. The letter that I asked to enter into record a moment ago, that's the letter from Willow Place Assisted Living Facilities, is the only instrument expressing concerns on the final assessments. Willow Creek said that the new sidewalk is unusable by their residents. And number two, they said that the cost of the assessment is a significant burden on them. I can respond to their first concern about the sidewalk. The sidewalk that was built has a small curbing around the rain garden that separates it. And Willow Place said that the curbing poses a risk to their handicapped, let me quote-unquote "handicapped," and older residents, unquote, because their eyesight is poor in general. What I can say is that the design and the construction of the sidewalk follow the ODOT, that's Oregon Department of Transportation standards, for the improvements. Their second concern is about the cost, and that would be a decision for the mayor and the city councilors. This project in conclusion offers a true partnership for the city to work with the LID participants, leveraging major financial resources from ODOT to complete a critical segment of the sidewalks and bylands that's heavily used within the city's transportation system. I appreciate, by taking this opportunity, to say thank you to those who have been working with us throughout this process here. In future, the city is also looking forward to opportunities to leveraging grant funding to complete the College Street sidewalk to its northern city limits near Foothills area. So with that said, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them. Thank you.
Councilor McKenney?
The question for the handicapped and older residents around the care facility. Is a remedy for that situation that the resident, if they were in a wheelchair, could fall into that collection basin? Is that what happens there? They have a danger of rolling off the sidewalk into a collection basin?
The curb is surrounding the rain garden, and so is, in essence, parallel to the sidewalk itself. So if there should be a wheelchair falling the north and south direction along the sidewalk, I don't think there would be a possibility of falling into the rain garden unless somehow it's getting too close to it, perhaps. And there's something, at my age, I would not be able to say a whole lot, I guess, at this point in time.
If there was a recommended remedy, what would that be?
Willow Place Assisted Living, they mentioned that the curbing poses a risk to their handicapped and older residents because their eyesight is poor in general. So they may not see it and may be bumping into it. One possibility might be to, if you're asking to highlight the curb, that is what I can be thinking about at this point in time.
Follow on.
Would a more adequate remedy be a railing to prevent a person from falling into the rain garden or the collection basin?
On, you want to pitch in on that?
Karen Hoffman, City Engineer. The depth of the rain garden doesn't require the need for a railing. It's not deep enough to need that. Certainly, we could -- we have talked with ODOT before, and they are not willing to participate in those costs. That would be strictly the city's cost for that. Design as it sits meets ADA standards and ODOT standards, so I don't really see a need to put a railing in for safety purposes.
If I may. This one, I think, is Paul. You can probably handle this one. On page 41, in the listing of the assessments. And just for clarification purposes, the 601 Mission Drive has a footnote on it about reduced net assessment. Are you with me on that?
Yes.
Okay. The $9,100, is that a net, or is that less than $3,600?
That would be the net.
That is a net.
That's the one that they will pay.
That is very good. I appreciate that. And am I firm in my understanding that the assessments that we see on page 41 in Table 1, none of those assessments exceed what we earlier estimated?
Correct. It's exactly the same as what it was in the previous ordinance.
Okay. Any other questions for staff at this time? We have two people that have signed up that want to address us on this, and I'm going to honor that at this time. I will advise those that have come before us that we have a limitation of five minutes per individual to express your opinion or your concern that we have on there. We will start with proponents and then move to opponents. We have two people there, and I will call them by name. We will begin with the proponents, and I have a Mr. Paul Bach. Bach? I'm sorry. It could go either way. Thank you. Bach it is, all right.
Your light on the right button, please. And identify yourself. My name's Paul Bach. I live on North College Street. I guess the first thing I'd like to say is we have been enjoying the sidewalk, and especially the safety that the sidewalk brings. And the neighborhood was completely supportive of the project itself, and so we're happy about that situation that was brought. And the other thing is just to say something that you already know, but it's the type of thing that's like, I just want to hear myself say it out loud so that I don't regret having not said it later. And that is, the proposal before you represents basically a kind of a compromise between the neighborhood and the city, that the neighbors felt like the city should have put some money into it, and so the compromise that we arrived at was that we'd have a 30-year loan and a 1.5% interest. And I guess I just wanted to say, I hope that we stay with that. And that's all I need to say.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Bach? None appearing. Thank you. Appreciate it very much. The button on the right, and please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Michael DeShane, and I'm actually representing Willow Place. We are the -- I'm president of the management company that operates Willow Place. And I want to -- most of the reasons that that letter was written was to make sure there really is serious liability, certainly among our residents. We won't let them use the sidewalk. I understand I could go out, and most of us could go out and do just fine. And it's a beautiful -- I mean, it's really nice. They got the little grass and stuff in there. It's really cool. But we can't let our residents -- it's a significant liability to us and to our residents. The curb's about that tall, I think about 3 inches, and it drops off into the grassy area, the water retention area. And it's a significant danger. If you're 80 years old, not just in a wheelchair, but in a walker, and that walker gets caught on that curb, if you can't see very well, it's just a real danger. Now, I don't know -- I'm sure that ODOT says it's just fine and wonderful and dandy, and I'm sure it meets all those requirements. But there's unintended consequences to anything we do, and in this case, the elderly and the disabled that live at our building really can't use that sidewalk. And just on the side, a couple of days ago, our director said some kid was riding his bicycle on there and wheeling down and hit the curb and fell into the thing. Our residents aren't going to be riding bicycles and doing wheelies. But it is a sample, and I wanted to make sure we got that on the record, both to protect -- well, to protect us, actually, and to protect our residents. A railing would be nice, but I think a railing would be really nice. But on the whole, I also like the project. I think it's just wonderful. And they didn't kill our trees, our willow trees. We'd had to change our names. So they're still -- they're doing fine. The second thing about the amount, and I suppose that was generated just by the number of feet we have on this lousy sidewalk. We serve a lot of Medicaid residents, and the state has never paid all that well for people who are on Medicaid. And it's going to be a significant burden on Willow Place. But that's why I didn't really know whether I was in opposition or -- so that's all I have to say. Thank you. I still have two minutes.
If you need just a moment, Councilor Rourke, Councilor McKenney?
Yeah, just one quick question. Since I don't -- I'm not an expert on this, what's the difference in danger between a curb sticking up and a curb dropping off, like into traffic on Highway 99?
Well, it wouldn't be into traffic. You'd fall into the grass. You would fall into the ditch.
Correct. But if it was a sidewalk typical of a highway where the curb is right next to all the traffic, what's the danger difference?
Well, in a typical -- what I would have assumed, in a typical neighborhood, you have a sidewalk, you have a parking strip, you have a curb, and the parking strip, in the typical sense, has some safety for it. It's a change in elevation a little bit. It's also a change in the texture, so if somebody walks onto that, whether they can see it or not, they can tell. The curb, and again, if you're a new idea, if you were an older person, you assume that it's just like they've always been. You got a walkway, and you got a parking strip. If you don't see that, you don't really tell them.
Councilor McKenney?
Karen, I was hoping that you would use the correct phraseology.
Disabled?
It might be ADA-approved. But the allegation here is that it's an ADA-approved trip hazard for an 88-year-old. Is that a correct assumption? Is that what I heard?
Well, some 78-year-olds do.
78, all right. Your firm is recommending a rail to help negotiate this potential trip hazard in relationship to a basin, or even it's a shallow basin, rather than just a smoother parkway.
Correct.
All right? And your firm is in the process of making a formal recommendation of a railing?
We've done nothing. I just wanted to talk to you.
Mr. Mayor, I think that sometimes there are some unanticipated consequences to even an ADA-approved, you know, type of a situation here. I'm not 88 years old, or even 78 years old, but I have had the misfortune of some falls during 2015. And it doesn't take much of an incline, you know, to put me in a situation where I had to have toes sewed back on, to where I -- significant bruising and other maiming there. Even if the proposal would be approved this evening, I think it's still worthy of our staff determining whether or not, even though it's ADA-approved, have we established a trip hazard in relationship to the purpose of the sidewalk? The purpose of the sidewalk, its full length, north and south, was to provide a safe way for persons to traverse that west side of College, so that every person, regardless of their age, could have the ability to traverse that expansive sidewalk and be safer for it, rather than the unanticipated consequence here of maybe creating a trip hazard. That would still remain one of my concerns to my fellow councilmen. It was unanticipated, but I would feel bad for broken eye sockets, stitches, you know, collapsed knees, broken hips, all of the things that might occur from there. And I think it'd probably be worth our time and expense to investigate what it would require to eliminate this unanticipated trip hazard here. That would continue to be a concern regarding this ordinance number 2016-2797. Paul, what is your address?
1111.
1111? And Willow is -- what is the address of Willow? 1307?
Yes, sir.
And Paul, again, you said 1111? Thank you. Mr. Holvik, what is your address along North College there? 7600? Bob?
What's that?
What is your address there? 7600?
717.
717. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other things for Mr. DeShane right now? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
With that, I'm going to close the public testimony. We've had one letter that you have received, I think all individually, from Willow Place that was submitted to you earlier. You've had a chance to read it. Is there any other written communications that have come in? No other written communications that have come in. Closing remarks of the staff, please.
The staff's recommendation would be to request the mayor and the city councilors to affirm the final assessments as presented in this proposed ordinance 2795.
Are there any further questions or comments that you have for staff? None appearing. Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will go into deliberations. Pleasure the council. Councilor McKenney?
I have a question for staff that I just thought of. At the location of 717 North College, there was a significant -- the water does not go from the property into the collection basin or the curve. Karen? Karen, has some significant headway been made at 717 North College Street?
Karen Hoffman, City Engineer. Yes, actually, it has. We went out and TV'd the lines, found actually an obstruction on that property within their private laterals and talked with the property owner about getting those cleaned up. We did actually find a couple other issues with the, I want to call it an island, the grassy area kind of pork chop in front of Duskins. They, actually, the contractor didn't make the connection from that area over to the storm system and ODOT is working with them to get that taken care of as we speak.
So is it a correct assumption that drainage from the properties has been properly established to the curbs and the drainage ditches?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? None appearing. You may be excused. Again, I ask, pleasure, the council. Councilor Bacon?
I'll get this started here. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2162795 to affirm the final assessments for College Street Local Improvement District that was created by the ordinance number 20132769 to recoup a portion of the cost for the west side frontage improvement of North College Street and Illinois Street to Aldercrest Drive.
Second. It's been seconded. Rourke on the second. We've had the motion. Okay. Now, we're going to back up a little bit. This is an ordinance.
Okay.
So this is a first reading.
Okay.
So I'm going to hold that motion in abeyance.
Mayor, I'd like to make a different motion.
Handing a motion to waive the second reading.
I'd like to make that other motion. I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we waive the second reading? Is there any further discussion on that? Question has been called for. I hear, Councilor Essen?
Do we need to have two votes?
Say again.
Do we need two votes because there is two motions?
There's two motions, but the other one is held in abeyance. This is a waiver of the second reading. The question's been called for. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Aye. Uh-huh. Okay. So I have to do my little bit of homework here. All right. So you have a motion before you now. We've waived the second reading. And this motion is to approve ordinance 20162795. And I'm going to ask the maker, that is, to read by title only?
Yes, sir.
Second concurs?
Yes.
Thank you. To read by title only and the adoption of ordinance 20162795. Is there any further discussion? Councilor McKenney?
I think it's still worthy of consideration or remedy for the potential trip hazard that might have been created here. I'd be willing to support the motion if staff was directed to deliver to us information about how that trip hazard might be remedied and the cost involved perhaps to do it. I would not be in favor of placing a citizen of Newburgh in a situation to where they might trip over that curb and fall into that collection basin.
Councilor Cory?
Yeah, this ordinance doesn't address the issue of railings or anything. It's addressing simply assessments on the properties. So I, my discussion topic would be, I may agree with you, but it would be a separate issue from what we're voting on right now.
Councilor Rourke?
Yeah, I'm not sure I would agree with the safety side of this and I may be ignorant or something, but I think there's a safety hazard of me stepping off of a curb and I could twist my ankle. I'm concerned we're creating a city that needs bubble wrap. So we might as well hand out bubble wrap to people to help them because we can't legislate whether people burn their house down with a lamp over their animals' kennel or if someone trips. So I'm in favor of this ordinance now, whether some other solution happens to every trip hazard in the city. We'll talk about that later, I think.
Regarding the discussion that's going on, I will be favoring the ordinance as it's been delivered to us. And I would suggest to Councilor McKenney that this is a remedial activity that we might want to consider. And I would encourage you to bring this back before the council during council business and we can wrestle with it at that time. Thumbs up, thumbs down, but I don't think it is personally germane to what the issue is that we're trying to do today. So I'm in favor of the motion as presented without any attending issues, but I will be glad to entertain a discussion during council business on the issue. Anything further? The question has been called for, so if you would do us the honors, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 2016-2795, an ordinance to affirm the final assessments for the College Street Local Improvement District that was created by ordinance number 2013-2769 to recoup a portion of the cost for the west side frontage improvements of North College Street from Illinois Street to Aldercrest Drive.
It's a roll call vote. City Recorder, please.
Councilor Essen?
No.
Councilor Cory?
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
Council President Bacon?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor McKenney?
No.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
5-2. All right. We will now move to a second item on our legislative hearings. And that one pertains to an ordinance granting Portland General Electric Company and Oregon Corporation a franchise agreement intended to clarify, enhance, expand, waive, and vary the provisions of Newburgh Municipal Code 12.05. And with that, I'm going to again call for any abstentions, conflicts of interest, objections to jurisdictions on the part of the council. None appearing. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Truman Stone City Attorney. Approximately a year ago, a presentation was made before the council by representatives from Portland General Electric. They expressed some concern that they had about the municipal code and how it had been amended in 2008 to adopt a licensing, 2007, 2008, somewhere in that timeline, to adopt a licensing model and go away from the model of granting franchises for utilities using the public right of way. At that time, the Portland General folks expressed their belief that franchise was necessary to address specific concerns that they had that were unique to Portland General in the way it operated within the city's right of way. After considering that presentation, the council, by motion, directed staff to negotiate a franchise agreement with Portland General Electric. And it took a little time to do it and frankly, I'll take some of the responsibility. It sat on my desk for some time due to other more pressing issues. But we eventually were able to come to consensus about how the franchise would be structured, addressing both Portland General's concerns and needs and also the needs of the city. So what is here before you tonight is that franchise agreement. Couple things I'll note. This does not completely supersede the municipal code. The municipal code is still the guiding document, except we're modified by this agreement. And the code itself contemplated that there would be specific incidents or incid...
One of those.
I still can't come up with the right word. Instances, that's the word. Sometimes the brain and the tongue get disconnected. That there would be situations where modifications would be necessary to meet those kind of concerns and needs. So again, what's before you was what the council directed staff to do. We've accomplished that and bring it before you tonight for your approval. I will note that there are several representatives from PGE here tonight. I'm sure they're available if the council has any questions or would like to hear their perspective of this. And that concludes my report.
Questions for staff? None appearing? Are there any questions of the document before you? The ordinance is requesting you to adopt this ordinance granting the General Electric Company a franchise agreement for operation of their utilities here in the city of Newburgh. Councilor Bacon?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading. I'm going to go in the right order this time.
There has been a motion to waive the second reading, this being an ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to waive the second reading. Is there any further discussion? None appearing. Is there a call for the question? The question's been called for. The question is waiving the second reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. None appearing. The second reading has been waived. To the ordinance. Pleasure, the council.
I have a question.
Question?
Financial impact has been indeterminate. Is there an anticipated financial impact that the council could be appraised of?
Councilor McKenney, when the representatives from PGE came before you last time, they explained how they wanted some clarifying language on the definitions of gross revenue and how it's calculated. And their representation was that this had to do with the way their tariffs are with the state, but that it had no financial impact on the city. But the city staff's not able to do that kind of math on their own. So we don't know if there would be. By changing the definition of gross revenue from what's in the ordinance to what's in this franchise agreement, we can't say with any certainty what the financial effect of that would be. But it's not anticipated that there would be much, if any, of a financial impact.
Follow on?
I remember the discussion about the definition of gross revenues. Could gross revenues be defined in such a way that there is a potential financial impact? Or is it just a question that would never be answered?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Councilor Rourke?
I have a very broad one. What is different in the franchise agreement than our Newburgh Municipal Code? I think that was one of our main topics. Our code can handle stuff like this. So what is, what's the big deal?
Well, we could pose that to the Portland General folks and I think they could point out a number of areas how this affects their operations somewhat differently. But I will, I'll point out a couple. One is our code requires before any work is done within the right of way that a bond be posted, a construction bond, which obviously would have a cost to the utility to purchase that bond. It's staff's view that when we're dealing with entities like Portland General Electric and Northwest Natural Gas, there are companies that have been here for many years, that are here today and will be here at least in the foreseeable future. If something goes wrong, I think they're good for the money. That being said, we have other companies that we've had no track record with, no experience, companies who come from out of state, who are primarily laying telecommunication cables within city right of way. And they may be just a one-time coming through the city and then they're gone. So that's a significant difference. And frankly, I think for any of the established utilities, we'd be, the city would be willing to waive that bond. But there is a protection to the city for those that we don't have that high level of confidence in. That's one. Again, there is, the way their rate structures and tariffs are with the state, they break out, I'm not sure I can really adequately explain this, but they break out the cost into two separate charges and one is recoverable as a rate on the customer's bill and the other is absorbed into the overhead of the company. And so there's some clarification of that. Another difference is PGE owns a lot of the utility poles in town, a lot of the overhead. And so there's provisions in here about relocating those overhead utilities either on a temporary basis to accommodate construction or accommodate house move, you know, when they have to move a house sort of a thing. And then there's other provisions about if the utilities need to be underground as part of the project and some, there's provisions in here that if it's a city requirement for a city project, that it will be done at no cost to the city. But if it's for a private developer, that they have the ability to recoup some of those costs from the developer according to their own rate structures for doing that. There's a provision in here that grandfathered existing facilities, which was Section 2. There are in fact some PGE facilities that go through city parks, which would be something that we wouldn't probably allow these days, but you know, those are grandfathered in by this. Trying to remember all the different areas. There's, in Section 7, there's a, some clarifying language about the authority to use PGE facilities. That would be to attach different equipment to the poles themselves and the city has that ability to do it for city purposes. I think those are kind of the highlights of it. Again, I'm sure the PGE folks would be happy to give you their perspective and more information on that.
Follow on?
Follow on? So our code didn't tackle those general areas, correct? And so this, I guess, as a result... And so this, I guess, as a result, based on the number of different areas was worthwhile endeavor?
Well, in some of the areas, the code actually does address it, but in a fairly general manner. The code was written fairly broadly to cover a bunch of different situations. This had some tightening of who was going to do what and what kind of timeframes there were and what kind of notice needed to be given. And so it, I think if you were to ask PGE, they would tell you that this gives them some higher level of certainty in dealing with the city than just the general terms under the code.
Other questions of staff? Do you feel that there's a need of representatives from PGE to have any remarks?
I'm certain there are.
And does PGE feel that they need to and didn't sign up earlier?
I'm certain they'd be happy to address you.
Come before us, Ms. Valise, and the city recorder will provide you with a form that you need to complete afterwards. Now give it to her now.
I don't have it back here.
The button on the right, and identify yourself, please.
Wendy Valise, Portland General Electric, 121 Southwest Salmon Street, Portland, Oregon,
Barbara Halli, Portland General Electric. I'm one of the attorneys. Also 121 Southwest Salmon Street, Portland, Oregon, 97204.
Well, I'm going to make brief comments to you, and we certainly can answer any questions. But our appreciation to the city staff as well as city council last year for allowing us to move forward and negotiate a franchise contract. I think central to the question last year was the ordinance did allow a franchise contract if it was to the benefit of your constituents. And I believe at the time last year, we were able to persuade you that there was a need, and we feel that this contract, which took maybe a little bit longer, but we're certainly grateful, really is going to benefit your constituents. And I will just take, to expand on what Truman said, kind of highlight a few provisions in this contract that's really going to be supporting this community, if that's helpful. So one of the pieces that I wanted to expand on, and there's construction, for example, the language in here, part of the reason we did that was for the safety of our employees and the safety of your city employees in terms of how and who is working on the electrical system and who can come in there and is qualified to work on that system. So again, that's a safety measure for PGE employees as well as your employees. So I think that's a benefit to your community. Another provision that I want to make note in, and I will compliment your city staff that worked with us, is, and they were insistent on it, and it is a unique provision. In the relocation language, under notice, one of the things that they really asked for was, we want to be supportive of economic development. I believe your staff does too. We want projects to move along. And when there are deadlines and things need to move along, and one of the challenges, they said, we need something from PGE to, we can certainly walk away and try to negotiate a timeframe, but there are times where they, based on a variety of factors, they may slip. And then it may, in fact, cost us money if you're delayed in your project. And one of the things they insisted is a little motivation to ensure that we would really work towards one, agreeing to a date. If we agree to a date, that's a little different. And certainly if there's a public emergency, that comes into play. But in this instance, for every day that we're delayed, there is a provision that there's a $500 penalty on PGE, and that is very unique, that provision. And so that was something that your staff negotiated as well for, on behalf of your constituents here. Another one that was not in the ordinance that I think is of great benefit is the use of PG facilities, which the city has now the benefit of being able to, and has had and will continue to have with this agreement, the ability to attach to our poles free of charge for the use municipal purposes. So that was something that was not in the ordinance. It's again, benefit to your, particularly like for police and radio and those kinds of public benefit uses. I think that'll be something that is helpful. One other one I want to make note of, and I'm just trying to highlight here, because I think all of it is really valuable to us, but the other piece is the payment for use of the city right-of-way. The right-of-way ordinance currently has a different payment schedule. This provision here is, was requested by your finance department. Rather than have quarterly payments, including franchise, I believe the finance department provide, may provide some additional feedback on that. But they asked for an annual payment basically done at the beginning of the year instead of quarterly being spread out. So you're not, you're getting these quarterly payments throughout the year. They prefer to maintain the lump sum early in the year so that you're, again, it's in your bank account, and then you can use it for city purposes. So that was something that I believe, again, benefits your general fund, certainly. And I think I'm going to leave it with that, except for I think we're going to just touch on the definition of gross revenue, because there seemed to be some interest around that question.
Okay, so I'll, I will address that. The definition of gross revenues is one that is pretty standard for us in all of our franchise agreements. It is based on the definition that the PUC provides in the regulations for various of the rules concerning, for example, what part of the payment is spread in rates and what part goes on the customer bills. Those regulations are mandatory for us. We have to put anything above 3.5% of gross revenues on our bills to customers. And there's a fairly extensive definition there. And that tracks pretty consistently with how we calculate franchise fees and privilege taxes for all of the cities that we operate in. So this, and to answer Councilor McKinney's question, it's not, it isn't going to change how we pay things, plus the fact that we're going to be doing the annual payments. But the percentages have not changed. Whatever you have asked us to pay, that percentage still continues.
And I think with that, again, I just want to express our appreciation for both the city council last year and for the city staff. You're very fortunate. You have great staff here, and we appreciate working this agreement out with them. Thank you.
Questions for PGE staff? Councilor McKinney?
The document as we see it here becomes more representative of the kinds of documents that you would like to see in your relationships with all of the cities that you do business with. I think you related last year that different places have different methodologies or rules or whatever. This becomes more representative of PGE's relationship with most of the cities that they do business with?
Yes, yes. And I think, Councilor McKinney, and if I recall, the, those who use, particularly the clarification, are those who are working on the ground every day, moving those projects along, getting them done. And this is really going to be helpful to them to just understand that they're, it's very clear.
Just a little closer to you.
Sorry. That they understand how we're to work in the right-of-way and the rules around that. So I think that's going to be very supportive for our teams who are out there in the field.
Well, I take it by that explanation that this becomes more efficacious. This becomes more effective on a broader base of getting things done and shortening the time periods, mitigating any problems that you might have because of mishaps or some of the other things that might be there. So I appreciate your explanation.
Councilor Essam?
Under 11 notice, any notice provided for or disagreement shall be sufficient if in writing and delivered personally to the following addressee, postage paid, mail certified. So I'm just asking, I mean, you give us the notification one day and begin the project enough, the next day, and that's sufficient notice? Is that what I'm understanding?
If you're reading Section 11 notice, I believe that's the notice for this agreement.
Oh, the notice for the agreement?
Yes, yes, not for a project, but for the agreement itself.
Or any changes in the agreement if they're requested.
You have a follow-on? Thank you. Any other questions for the PGE staff right now? Thank you both for coming up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
And be sure and give the forms to our city recorder. And you can do that later, is, just finish them up so we have the records.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other documents, any letters coming in from outside sources on this? With that, I'm going to close the public testimony and the full, the citizen testimony on that, and ask for the closing comments from staff, please.
Thank you, Chairman Stone City Attorney. It's my recommendation that the council approve ordinance 2016-2797.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there any further questions for staff? Do I say it now or forever hold your peace? Close the public hearing and go into deliberations. You have before you a request to adopt an ordinance granting the Portland General Electric Company and Oregon Corporation a franchise agreement intended to clarify, enhance, expand, waive, or vary the provisions of Newburgh Municipal Code 12.05. Pleasure the council. Councilor Bacon?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2016. We already did that. I did that right away. 2016-2797, and read by title only.
Very good. Do I hear a second? Rourke on the second. Practice makes perfect.
I know. Can't fool me twice.
Caught Councilor Corey off guard on that one. Any further questions, any further discussion? Question has been called for, so if you would read by title only, and we will have a real call vote.
Ordinance number 2016-2797. An ordinance granting Portland General Electric Company and Oregon Corporation a franchise agreement intended to clarify, enhance, expand, waive, or vary the provisions of Newburgh Municipal Code 12.05.
City recorder, please.
Councilor McKinney?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke? Council President Bacon?
Yes.
Councilor Woodruff?
Yes.
Councilor Corey?
Yes.
Councilor Essam?
Yes.
Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Major Mass is seven zero. Thank you. With that, we will now move to new business, which is we're going to hear the audit report and the annual fiscal statements for June 30, 2015, and a plan of action to address any deficiencies. And with that, I'll call on Mr. Matt Zook. And a stranger that's with you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Director Matt Zook. Thank you for having us. I would like to introduce to you Brad Bingenheimer from Bolt Carlisle Smith. He is our lead auditor, partner and lead auditor for, this is our second year with Bolt Carlisle under the current contract. And I'm going to let him address you, and then as you have in your packet, I have a request for council action that will ask for a approval via motion, which is basically our, my response to the audit report and our plan of action to address things that came up. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brad.
Thank you, Matt. Yes, once again.
Please identify yourself.
Oh, yes.
Because we're recording, that's why.
Okay, yes. My name's Brad Bingenheimer, and I am a partner with the accounting firm of Bolt Carlisle and Smith. And once again, we had the pleasure of serving as the city's auditor for the year ended June 30, 2015, and we've issued our report in connection with those financial statements. Our report is what we consider an unmodified report, which says in essence that, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position and results of operations of the city for the year ended June 30, 2015. We had quite a few changes this last year in connection with the financial statements and financial reporting. Probably the largest was the implementation of a new accounting standard by the city. This is an accounting standard that was mandated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. It's known as DASB 68, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Pension Plans. So the city has its own pension plan for certain employees and also participates in Oregon PERS. Essentially, what you're, we've done is change the focus of financial reporting in connection with defined benefit plans. In the past, the focus was on funding. You had an actuarial determination of your contributions you should make, and if you made those contributions, that was considered good, and you didn't have any plus or minus. If you made more than that, you had a plus to, that you actually got to report a prepaid, and you amortized that prepaid over a period, as you had when you issued PERS bonds a number of years ago. If you paid less, well, that indicated you need to report a liability. They changed that focus entirely. Now they're looking not at your funding of the plan, but looking through to the underlying plan and having the city report its share of PERS, whatever position it's in, or your own plan, whatever position that is, at the end of the year. So it was a significant change, and I know we worked quite a bit with Matt and his staff to get all the actuarial reports in that we needed, to work through the financial accounting of it, the journal entries that needed to be made, that are embodied in the financial statements. So it was a significant change. You know, a good example is that, you know, Oregon PERS, because of some certain things that were going on with that, actually ended with a net pension asset to the city for the year ended June 30, 2015, in the amount of $1.9 million. Now that's going to change this next year, and it all has to do with some court cases and some things that the legislature tried to do to put a cap on future cost of living increases for retirees that the court said they couldn't do. And all those will get reflected in the next year, where you'll probably end up in a liability position, I guess, somewhere related to PERS, somewhere around $2.00 million, would be my guess. In relation to your own plan, you have actually a net pension liability of about $9 million. And see, these are being embodied in your financial statements. In the past, they have not. We only look at the differences between actuarial required contributions and the amount you actually paid. So it's a significant change in the focus. So a brief overview of the city you did in the year with total assets of, total assets and a new category, deferred outflows of resources, right around $210 million for overall the city, both governmental activities and business-type activities. Total liabilities and... Total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources of about $68 million. So that left you in a net position of $144 million. And that's actually an increase. If you discount the effect of the implementation of these new standards, you actually had an increase of $9.6 million. And this is one of those things that, as we look at governmental financial statements, increases in net position over time is an indication overall of improving financial health of an organization. When you see it going the other way, that begins to, you'll ask, you have to ask yourself, okay, are the, are revenues shrinking, or are they stagnant at times when costs are increasing? What's going on? And it can be, in a trend over a number of years, something that has to be addressed. So we do have positive development in net position this last year. As far as your funds go, your governmental funds also showed an overall improvement in fund balance of $1.1 million. And your proprietary funds, the water, sewer systems, that sort of thing, you also had a positive improvement in their specific net position of $7.3 million. So overall, the financial position, I can say, trends are improving financial position of the city during the year. In addition to our report on the financial statements, we also issue several reports in compliance with laws and regulations. The first of those reports is one based on Oregon laws and regulations, and we performed tests, the specific ones as required by Oregon law, and we did note a few things in relation to your budget. You did have, for the year ended June 30, 2015, two items where you over-expended appropriations, which does happen. It's not the worst thing in the world, but it does happen. And then we also noted a few things just in the development of the 2015-16 budget, some things that we felt were violations of that process. Another part of that report talks about internal controls. And we'll talk about internal controls a little bit later, but in every audit, we gain an understanding of the internal controls of an organization. We do that for two reasons. One, it helps us plan the audit better. We're able to audit more efficiently and effectively if we understand how things flow through your system. And secondly, it identifies to us any potential weaknesses. A weakness in internal control for an auditor is an indication of an area that we may want to pay more attention to in our audit, because it could be an indication of increased audit risk. So we consider those things as part of our audit. Another report that we issue is under the requirements of government auditing standards. These are federal audit standards issued by the comptroller of the currency, and these, again, are looking at internal controls of financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations. The laws and regulations are expanded to basically anything that could have a significant impact on the financial statements of the city if there was an instance of non-compliance. We didn't find anything of that magnitude that we need to bring forth tonight. In regards to internal controls or financial reporting, there were a few things that we did want to bring forth. You know, as we were going through, we noticed that the bank reconciliations, as performed by the finance department, didn't fully reconcile all items between the accounting records and the bank statements. For an auditor, that's something that we don't like to see. I mean, we like to see every single thing identified in there. And the reason is, you know, as auditors, we learn from past experience. And when we look around how other people have done really bad things to municipalities, bank reconciliations are a great way to hide things. We don't like to see that. I'm not saying that that happened here, just that you need to have a good process in place to make sure that every single item is identified. So we talked to staff about that, and I think they have a plan that they're bringing forth to help correct that. But it's something we noted. We also noted a couple other areas regarding segregation of duties. You know, one of the components of internal controls is that you should never have one person doing all of one thing. Well, if you have that, then that, there's no, that person can do whatever they want. There's no double-check, there's no assurance that what they're doing is correct. They could be doing completely, things completely correct, but there's no assurance that they are. As auditors, we worry about what could happen, not necessarily what has happened. So we did notice a couple areas where internal controls could be improved by improving segregation of duties. Another report that we issued drills down a little bit even further into specific federally-funded programs. We're required to do that under the requirements of Office of Management Budget, circular A133. This looks at specific federal programs to determine, one, have you complied with its requirements, and two, do you have internal controls to ensure you remain compliant with that? And we didn't have any findings under those requirements. And just for your information, your total federal expenditures for this last year was $6.5 million. Any questions to all that? I noticed, man, I really cleared out this room, didn't I?
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Essen?
I was looking at, we're writing down a number of $144 million to PERS, or is that...
I'm sorry, that was your net position. $144 million is your net equity position at the end of the year.
Okay, so that is our equity position in what?
That's the, the net position of the city. So in the front of the financial statements, there's two statements that are on what we call the government-wide statements. This is you pull everything that the city has together on a full accrual basis, almost like a business would. And if you were looking at a business, you're looking at their retained earnings or owner's equity. That would be the equivalent for the city. So the equity of the city is $144 million. That's all your assets, less all your liabilities. On a historical cost basis.
And there was another number, I think it was $9 million that followed that?
Yeah, so the $9 million amount, that is the net pension liability for the city's defined benefit plan. So for the city's defined benefit plan, you have total assets in there of just over $18 million, okay? The projected retirement benefits earned to date of your employees that participate in that plan, present valued back to the reporting date, would be approximately $27 million. So that's where you have a $9 million net pension liability. And those are all based upon actuarial computations done by the principal, correct?
So what does that tell us?
What does that tell you? Basically, it means today, your retirees have earned the right to those payments, and you haven't yet set aside sufficient funds today to fund that. That's why your actuarial reports also provide a annual required contribution. So they're designed, you know, and actuary looks at things that were long-term, and so they're saying, you know, given the current, that current deficit, what do you need to be paying over the next 30 years so that there are fully funds that are available to meet all those requirements payouts to your retirees? So, you know, it's from that standpoint, it's just giving you an indication of, you know, how healthy your plan is. You know, overall, Oregon is very fortunate. Our public retirement programs are much better funded than many of them around the country. Some of them, it's abysmal how badly they are. They're going to have, be in a position where they're going to have to have huge contributions going to these programs that will basically come out of either additional taxes to the citizens or a reduction of services. There's just no other answer. I mean, if you look at, you know, a great example, City of Chicago, their pension plan is only about 35% funded, and that's a huge, huge plan. So really, overall, Oregon is a much better position than most of the states around the country in this regard.
Very good. Any other questions? Do you have more to go in as we're looking at this now? Matt or Brad, either one?
Well, go ahead, Matt. No, I just am here to answer any questions that you might have about our particular plan of action. I, the reason that we are presenting this plan of action is, like, in response to what some of the key things Brad mentioned, and I, I will say that as a new finance director walking in in 2015, it was quite a challenge. This essentially started with staff transition that occurred in April 14 and September 14. So unfortunately, it's been a very uncomfortable position for myself, because I've not, I've not been in this situation where we've had to have this kind of a plan. Fortunately, the city, I believe we're moving forward, I'm very pleased, even today, this, in those last two weeks, I mean, we are, staff is performing those bank recs in a timely manner, balancing them to the penny, and the review is happening. I will note, I clearly remember Counselor McKinney's comment last year at this time in regards to the court comment that is again in this, this year's court internal controls, the separation of duties there. We have addressed that. There's been some technological changes, some staffing changes, and the whole mindset of internal controls is something that weighs heavy on me, and I'm transitioning staff into thinking about things that maybe they haven't thought of before, and so that takes time. What we will do with the council's motion and approval with this recommended plan of action is we actually have to report this to the Secretary of State and then implement these timeframes. And I believe that the timeframes that we've asked for to make, continue to make these changes are adequate for us. The upcoming budget cycle will hopefully assist in that. I do believe that we, that the staff design at the finance department is working on an old model that was filled by folks that had been here for quite a long time. So we're hoping and trusting with this moving forward, we will continue to make improvements and come back to you another year with, hopefully, a completely blank slate, and we'll have nothing to talk about, and so, anyways, if you have any questions, oh, excuse me, that's the end of my staff report.
Counselor Essen?
Under total contingencies and reserves, I see $24,165,327, and that includes everything, I guess, because as I understand it, our net reserves that we have is, is much less than that. Is that correct?
I have no idea. What page are you on?
Page 55. Summary report, city budget totals, funds.
Oh, that's on the city budget?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have the budget document with me tonight.
Oh, we're not in financial, we're not there yet on financial statements. Is that what you're on?
Yeah, that's, yeah, he's looking at current stuff.
Oh, we're not there yet.
Sorry. We haven't audited that yet. We will, we will, trust me.
Okay, so this is the new stuff, all right.
You have a number of items here, the cash reconciliation, utility billing, municipal courts, preparation of financial statements, these deficiencies, expenditures, beginning fund balance, ending fund balance, and the, the action plans for that. In here, I did not see where you were going to follow up with the council as to the progress.
Excellent question, thank you. And I can do that. Periodically, we have the quarterly reports from the department heads. That might be a good opportunity to, to give you a progress update on this. If the council, if the council would like that more frequently, I can do that as well. But the timeframes that we have, some are more, more immediate, and I believe our next report is next month, and I can give you an update as soon as next month, and then on a quarterly basis beyond that, if that will suffice the council.
For me, I think quarterly would be most adequate.
Okay.
I mean, you can work that out.
Sure.
From my perspective with the city managers, when we actually get that on the agenda.
Right, okay.
But I'm only speaking for myself, the other council members may. I think we have a basic consensus there, except for Counselor Roark has a daily.
Oh, you want a daily?
But that was, that was the main concern I had there. Yeah, there you go. Now, you have before you, by the way, thanks Brad for the report, I appreciate it. You have before you a request for a motion that the council would, would accept the auditor's report in the, in the annual financial statements, and you concur with and adopt the plan of action to address the deficiencies identified in the report, audit report for June 30th. So the chair will entertain a motion to that effect. Counselor McKinney?
Well, I had a comment before making a motion. The council has not seen the description of the way that you've put things in our packet with the problem description, the action already taken, and then a plan of action for that. So I wanted to compliment you for identifying certain areas for us more adequately, seeing what was done immediately and what's necessary, you know, to take care of that. So I read with a great deal of interest your future plan of action, because I think that that marks some progress for us, and that was as substantial as, I think I glanced at every page of the report, which was unusual for me. The violations are always the things that stick out in my mind. Are there still any glaring violations that need to be attended to?
No, as I anticipate going through another audit, I think that this is, this is, these are the key areas, and as Brad said, you know, the, the bank reconciliation is kind of like the golden calf of, the golden cow of things you want to monitor and be on top of. So beyond that, you know, staff continues to, to grow in their knowledge of the regulations, and fortunately, we have some long-term staff that has continued to, to be present. So, no, I think this, these are the items that are on the list today, so.
Counselor Roark? Your mic, please. Counselor Roark?
Just to that, you've taken action on some of these, and the bank reconciliation, you said you, you are doing it now to the penny. Are, are these findings going to come next year as well due to the gap in time that you, we just started this, so there was a six, seven-month gap in time, maybe six-month gap in time, where they weren't being reconciled to the penny? Will our audit next year have the same finding due to that gap, even though you've corrected it today?
As your auditor, you know, assuming that it's corrected, I would not anticipate repeating it, because in the reconciliation process, you know, once you have all the items identified, it kind of clears up all the back ones where it wasn't fully identified. So I wouldn't anticipate having those, but of course, I have to wait until we actually perform that audit to give you an absolute assurance that they aren't there.
Any other comments? Any other questions? The chair will entertain a motion. Let's pleasure the council. Counselor Roark?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the audit report and annual financial statements for June 30. for June thirty, two thousand fifteen, and Matt's plan of action to address those deficiencies.
It's been moved and seconded. We have dual seconds. Any, any, any further discussion? Thank you for the work that you put into this, both of you. And Matt, the continuing work that will be going on this. No, there being no further discussion, the question has been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing, it moves seven, zero. Now, Counselor Esson, you had a question for Mr. Zook regarding the financial statement for December.
I'm just wanting to know about.
Mike, please.
Sorry there. Yes, I was just wanting to know what our reserve is at this point? What the balance, our reserve balance is. I see twenty-four million of everything, including contingencies.
And on what page are you?
Well, that was the page of fifty-five. They had city budget totals there, then total beginning fund balance, total revenues, total beginning fund balance and revenues, then total expenses, then total contingencies slash reserves. Shows the budget was sixty-three, nine, nine, almost sixty-four. And our prior year was twenty-nine, three, sixty-nine, four, twenty. And you probably don't have this in front of you. Would you like to have it there? So I'm, but I'm just curious is how are we doing on our reserves, I guess, are the questions?
The reserves, the reserve number here, I do, I do want to clarify that.
Would you identify yourself?
I sure would. I'm Brad Bingham, I mean, excuse me, Matt Zook, Finance Director. And I wanted to clarify something that Brad explained. When he, when he spoke about the net position of the city as, as being one, one hundred and forty-four million, I don't want the misconception that that's how much the city necessarily has in the books and coff, in cash and in the coffers. There's a lot of fixed assets that go into that to drive that up. So when we, when we talk month over month about our finances, we talk about things on a budgetary basis, like this report that you've, that you've brought, brought forward. So the, this number here of, of twenty-four million as far as contingencies, that's a combination of different types of funds, such as your water fund, sewer fund, storm drain. And so the reserves there are large and appropriate for the level of service that we're doing. As you know, the Citizens Rate Review Committee is going on right now, getting ready to conclude. And those reserves are in consideration of the future rates. So to say how those funds are, what the status of those reserves are, they're appropriate for a future number of projects and debt service payments. Of course, the general fund is the other fund, the big elephant in the room as far as what our reserve levels are. And the budget, if I recall correctly, the reserves for the budget include some unspendable funds. We call it an unappropriated fund balance. And then an appropriate level of contingency that we can access throughout the year if necessary. And those were somewhere around the eight percent range. And that's an acceptable, acceptable range. So without picking out particular funds, I think overall, the city's reserves are okay, in an okay position. But fund by fund is where you start looking at, you know, a different scenario, so.
Follow on? So I understand that we have a combination of contingencies and reserves. And we have, I don't, I forget how many funds, I remember, I'll have to get back into the budget again. We have a number of funds. And the one fund that, like you said, is the big elephant in the room would be the general fund. And as I recall, the balance last year was somewhere around three million. And I'm just wondering if you know what that balance is today?
Well, the budget, the budget balance for contingency and inappropriate ending fund balance is also on this page one, page fifty-five, and it's a combination of two-point-five million. It's, the line, contingency is one-point-four million and the inappropriate ending, ending fund balance is one-point-one million. And that's as budgeted. So that, that was one of the things that we designed this budget around was so that we would not dip into those reserves. If you recall, we had a large emphasis on essentially spending just new incoming revenues. So as we move forward, as we prepare, are preparing the budget now, we will, we will take a fresh look at that against future revenues and see if that remains to be an adequate amount.
Follow on? So I'm seeing unappropriated ending balance, unappropriated ending balance, one-point-one million. Is that, is that our number?
That's the budgeted number, yes.
Oh, is that what we're gonna spend in this year's budget?
No, we, that's the amount that we won't spend. That's definitely not an amount that we will spend.
Okay. We're trying not to spend that.
Yeah. We, we cannot spend it by Oregon budget law, yeah. Essentially, we would, we have budgeted to end the year by not spending the contingency amount and the inappropriate ending fund balance. As you know, we've already had a supplemental budget that has dipped into that contingency. So we will be reassessing, you know, what's, what the impact is, and we're doing that now, so.
Thank you. Good questions. Any further questions on the financial report? Well, we have Matt here. You saw the information on the council calendar for the future. Let us come back to a couple of things. One, the chair would entertain a motion to approve my sending forth this letter in support of the Lamont Falls Lock Economic Development Funding. In fact, I will make the motion. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? The question's been called for to approve the letter to Honorable Peter Courtney, Senate President, on behalf of the city. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Thank you. We'll take care of that. It'll get signed and out in tomorrow's mail. The second thing that I want to do is I want to come back and see if you, the council, would like to take an action or see an action explored regarding what was brought up about Willow Place. Do you want to carry that further, Mr. McKinney?
Well, I didn't sense any support for that kind of a motion. I don't know whether other councilors are concerned about that, that potential to, to, that might have been a created problem there. It's always disturbing to me is that we've spent an extraordinary, an extraordinary amount of money to get people to use that and then to have Willow say they forbade their, their people from using it because it's a trip hazard. There, there, there needs to be some kind of mitigation involved there. I think it's callous of us, the word bubble wrap was, was used. I thought that was entirely inappropriate at that particular point in time. We have toddlers and we have senior citizens. And every one of our citizens is important, whether or not they're bubble wrapped or not. If we've created a problem here, let's, let's be grown up about it and let's see if there's a way that we can mitigate that problem. I'd love to see that happen, but I didn't, I didn't sense from any other counselor any energy to propel that forward.
Counselor Bacon?
I agree with Counselor Rourke. We can't fix every problem. We put that, if someone trips over or some toddler falls under it, I mean, uses that as a swing and flies into the road, we can't fix that. But what I will say is that if, if that is something that they want, I, I would allow for it to be looked at, but I also believe they have to pay for it. I don't think, because we can't go around fixing everyone's problems. We can't afford it. They already complained about how much it costs. But if, if they feel like their residence would be safer with it done, if our engineering staff can come up with something, then they would have to pay for it.
Counselor Esson?
I thought I heard Mike say he wasn't against what you necessarily wanted to do. I think what it was, was it didn't fit in with the motion, which was, so I don't think you heard too much. And that's why you got my no vote with you, so you get the feeling that there was more than just you there. And I don't, I think Mike stated that if, you know, it was just not an appropriate motion on this, but somehow it needed, and the mayor said you can bring it up, so, and then I just heard Denise. So it sounds like you get some support if you want to have an idea where you want to go with it. I think you got the support, but we need to know where you want to go, because I don't.
Counselor Cory?
My, my comment was more along the lines of I may agree. However, it didn't coincide with the present motion that we had on the table. It didn't mean that I did agree. I'm tending to go along with what Counselor Rourke has to say. The city all over the place has liability issues. People can trip and fall and fall into things in, you know, our city parks or wherever. I understand that there are particular types of folks that may use this sidewalk there. However, again, we've complied with all the laws, all the ADA requirements, and ODOT has, you know, conceivably met all the requirements there. So I don't think we need to do any more to that as far as the city goes. Again, if Willow Place wants to come up with a proposal and pay for it, more like Denise was saying, maybe it's their responsibility to come up with a proposal. And I think that was discussed, maybe a plan of action for them, yeah.
Counselor Woodruff, and then City Attorney.
I also agree with Counselor Bacon and Counselor Rourke that the, a railing or putting a fix on this is not, not our responsibility and that there are liability issues all over. If, yeah, if they do have a solution and they're willing to pay for it, maybe it's just some yellow paint on that curb. Maybe it doesn't have to be a railing, but that's where I am.
City Attorney?
Thank you. I'd just like to remind the council that College Street is an ODOT state highway. And this right-of-way is ODOT right-of-way. They're the agency that designed the sidewalk and the water retention basins and such. Now, the city has agreed as part of this project to maintain and care for the sidewalk and the, the part that's in the improvement district. So the city's not totally outside of this. But I think you heard the city engineer say, you know, ODOT doesn't see there being an issue. But my understanding is we'd have to get approval from ODOT on anything that we were to do. And just keep that in mind. So this, this is an ODOT facility that the city has obligated itself to maintain.
If I may follow up on that, and it's kind of a callous question, and I don't mean it that way. But were something to, to happen? Is that the city's liability or ODOT's?
My assessment would be it'd be primarily ODOT's responsibility. That being said, again, we've agreed to maintain these. If there was an allegation that we, you know, knew the sidewalk was broken and we didn't fix it. But these are, from what I've heard in the conversation, there's concerns about the design itself, not whether it was properly maintained or cared for. That design was ODOT's design. And so my assessment would be they would bear that responsibility. That being said, you'd have to actually see the mechanism and what people were claiming caused the injury before you could apply that to the specific facts.
If they wanted to explore this, are we willing to try to give them an idea of what the cost would be? I'm looking at Steve right now. Is that an enormous project? This is what you did? This is not something that the council is wanting to fund? But this is what you're looking at in the way of a cause? But you really want us to be an advocate for you before ODOT? You know, that type of thing?
What I was gonna suggest is that perhaps staff look into it, report back to council on what the options are, including discussion with ODOT, have the private property owner do it. But it seems like we maybe need to get just a little more information and then assess where we go with it.
Thank you.
Once the two are disjointed, there's, after Truman's, there's, there's no mechanism. There's no energy to see to it that it's done here. I'm just kind of surprised by the attitudes.
Ms. Mayor? Counselor Esson?
Well, I take a different view. I think we just got an offer to have the staff look, come back with some options and see if there's something that makes sense that we could send forward. And if we had something in front of us, it's a lot easier to make a decision. So if I heard the options, I might change my mind, and so might everybody else. So that's where I'd like to see it go.
I have a question, I think, for this, and this was just, I made a note on this earlier. Has nothing to do with anything we've discussed up to this point. What liaison do we have with the school district? That we can, we can stay informed, other than reading about it after the fact, sometimes, in the paper, so that we, as a city, can, can recognize, find out and recognize some of the achievements of some of the kids at the high school? For example, I understand we have a water polo team that's first place again in the state this year. I also understand that the, the cheerleaders have, have again won a first place, either at the state or some other level. I think it'd be nice if we could keep up on those and, and recognize those wherever possible. Is there any way we can maybe hornswoggle the school district into keeping us better informed?
I, I have a suggestion.
Say again?
Mr. Mayor, I have a suggestion. And the girls, the cheerleading, they won, I think, their fourth consecutive state championship.
That's not a suggestion, that's a statement.
Yeah, no, no. But the school district does have a, an email that you can sign up for. And you can sign up for a general district news. You can sign up specifically for high school news or for each of the individual schools. Or you can sign up for all of them. And I can say from personal experience, you will get quite a bit of information emailed to you on a regular basis.
Okay, so the bucket's been kicked back to me. Neither do I.
Just a suggestion.
I appreciate that. Okay, anything else to come before the council?
Do we initiate those proclamations?
We do when we know about it. Then moved, it's seconded, no discussion, we are adjourned.